This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenly Town Council, and we are calling this annual town meeting to order. At this point, the town clerk will read the call of the meeting.
The annual town meeting of electors and citizens qualified to vote in the town meeting of the town of Killenly, Connecticut shall be held pursuant to section 101 of the Killenly, uh, 701, I'm sorry, of the town, Killenly Town Charter in the auditorium of the Killenly High School, 226 Putnam Pike, Killenly, Connecticut, on Monday, May 1st, 2023, at 7:00 PM, to consider, modify, and/or approve the following. Ordinance approving the operating budget for the town of Killenly for the fiscal year July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. Be ordained by the town council of the town of Killenly that in accordance with the section 1005 of the Town Charter, the budget of the town of Killenly, Connecticut for the fiscal year July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $25,511,808 allocated to general government and $45,305,118 allocated to the education for a combined total budget of $70,816,926 to be adopted. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman. A resolution setting the dates, times, and places of the annual town meeting and adjourned annual town meeting and machine vote on the 2023-2024 budget ordinance. Pursuant to section 1007 of the Town Charter and section 7-7 of the General Statutes, said town meeting at the conclusion we adjourned and theforesaid ordinance, as submitted or amended, will be submitted to vote upon voting machines scheduled between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00, um, 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. The ordinance will be placed on the voting machines under the following heading. The dollar value of said questions shall be subject to change based on the amendments from the floor of the annual town meeting. Those voters approving the question will vote yes, and those opposing the question will vote no. Those voting no will have an additional advisory question. Is the budget too high or is the budget too low? Number one, shall the general government budget for the town of Killenly, Connecticut, in the amount of $25,511,808 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024 be approved? Number two, shall the education budget for the town of Killenly, Connecticut, in the amount of $45,305,118 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024 be approved? Voting will be held at the following polling places. District 1, District 3, and District 5, Board of Ed, Central Office, 79 Westfield Ave., Connecticut, and Cafeteria. District 2 and District 4, Killenly High School, 226 Putnam Pike. Absentee ballots will be available on the afternoon of May 2nd, 2023. Please contact the town clerk at 860-779-5307 as soon as possible, because all ballots must be issued in person according to the Connecticut General Statutes. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman. I now would like to open nominations for moderator of the annual town meeting.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Anderson to nominate the meeting.
I'll second.
Are there any more nominations?
Make a motion to close nominations.
Is there a second?
Yeah. I'm down that way.
Are there any more, close, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I'd like to vote now on Jason Anderson as moderator of the annual town meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I'd like to now turn the meeting over to Jason Anderson.
Thank you. So this evening, those who are eligible to vote at town meeting are registered voters who are U.S. citizens and are at least 18 years of age. Those residents who are not registered voters are eligible if they own property assessed at $1,000 or more on the October 1st, 2022 grant list. These eligible voters will have the opportunity to speak or vote on the proposed town and school budgets. Eligible voters may make motions to modify the budgets presented. For the general government budget, you must specify a line item you want increased or decreased with a dollar amount. Whereas with the Board of Education, you can only suggest an increase or decrease in the proposed budget, give the dollar amount, but cannot specify where to increase or decrease the bottom line amount. I will entertain a motion to limit each person's comments to five minutes. I'll make that motion. Motion has been made by Mr. Cottula, seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion, comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. When anyone comes to the mic during this meeting, we ask that you state your name and address clearly so the clerk can put it on the record. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance approving the operating budgets for the town of Killenly for the fiscal year July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, as read by the town clerk. I'll make that motion. Motion has been made by Mr. Cottula, seconded by Ms. Wakefield. At this time, I will turn over to the town manager to do her presentation on the general government budget. That will be followed by the Board of Education presentation.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. I will be walking through overview of the process and then more specifically the town operating budget. So the first slide is just giving you the 10-year historical review of the grand list and the changes. You'll note that the columns that are in orange represent years in which the town had a revaluation. Every five years by state statute, the town is required to do a revaluation process. So the, you can see that from the current fiscal year to the next fiscal year, there has been an, about a 1% increase in the grand list for growth. Next slide. The mill rate changes, this is again the historical 10-year view on the mill rate with the proposed mill rate for the budget that is presented to you tonight in the last column. Again, the orange columns represent years in which the town had a revaluation, so as the grand list increased in that revaluation, then the mill rate decreased, so it's a balancing impact. So the proposed budget before you tonight collectively is, has a mill rate proposed at 25.85 mills. Next slide. And I apologize, I have some allergies, so I feel kind of stuffy, so I apologize for that. I want to just walk through with you some, you know, history on how did we get to where we are today? So, and I know that Mr. Angeli is also going to walk through the historical process on the Board of Education side. On the town side, we began our process in developing the budget in January with our department heads reviewing all of their historical spending and presenting to the, to myself a budget request. I met with each of the town department heads and reviewed those requests and reviewed the historical spending for all of those to develop a budget that was then presented to the town council. This slide that you have before you is the slide that is the original budget that was presented to the town council, and that, again, had general government increase for town operations of $367,000. It identifies some additional components, the student resource and armed security officers. The human resource subsidy had an increase of $201,000. And then the other general government appropriations is largely capital investment that is being funded through fund balance and lake road generating revenue. And also $400,000 of that is debt issuance. So this collective budget, the, had a, a mill rate impact increase of 1.95. Next slide. This shows what of the, of all of those components, what was driving the overall net increases that impact mill rate. As I said, the capital projects were offset by other revenues, so they didn't, they aren't being factored into your mill rate. So as you can see by this slide, the largest request obviously was the Board of Education at 1.7 mil, million. The town operations at 367,000, human services subsidy again, and then you can see that debt service of just under $400,000, and that was, that's for the KMS project. So when that project got approved, set a few years back, we had indicated that 2024 was going to be the first year that we were going to see debt repayments. We need to issue debt, we're going to be issuing debt for that project in the next month, and so we'll have our first debt payments that we have to make on that debt in next, in next fiscal year for that project. The next slide is going over what the town managers, my, my proposed changes were for the town operations, what, what drove that $367,000 and also what drove the increase in human services subsidy. So as you can see, the largest impact is contractual wage increases. We also had a 6% increase in our health insurance, and then there were some increases to some of the contingency and reserve funds that we have for ongoing long-term planning. For human services subsidy, the largest increase in that was, was the request by KB Ambulance with their, they had a proposed change in service. After that, after we had the public hearing with all of that data, the town council then deliberated, and the next slide shows what the town council's proposed budget, which is the budget that's before you tonight. So what is, what are, what are they proposing to the town for, for budgets? The general government appropriations, the town operations budget, that has been decreased to an increase of 267,000, so just about $100,000 has been removed. The other items, the student resource and armed security officers, that again is actually in the Board of Education budget, which is why you see it on the general government grouping at the top. You see it under expenditure, and then you see a revenue just below it in the revenue section that says less BOE reimbursement, because again, that full program is reimbursed by the Board of Education, and that's built within their budget. Human services subsidy, the town council reduced some of those requests, and I'll go over those in more detail, and then you can see the debt service. So on the town side, on the general government side, the increase coming into the mill rate is 658,000 or .4 mills. That's the increase, and the, the largest portion of that is debt service. That's $400,000 that's in debt service. The Board of Education change, the town council reduced the Board of Education original request by 1.5 million, and that has resulted in an increase to the Board of Education line item of 275,000, and that results in a net mill rate increase of .31. So the total mill rate increase before you tonight is .71 mills. So what did the town council change? The next slide shows those. In the towns, town government side of the budget, they reduced the salt and calcium law, line out of the winter maintenance line. This year, we've had a very mild winter, so we have not had a lot of heavy utilization of product for this last year, so we do have a large stockpile of salt in our salt shed. So that'll set us up in a good position going into next winter. We also do have a winter maintenance reserve that the town has invested in over the last number of years, so if we do have, you know, harder than normal winter, we do have a reserve account to go to. So they felt comfortable in reducing the $75,000 out of that winter maintenance salt line item. For the ambulance service, the K, the town council met with KB Ambulance to review their proposal, and they reduced the increase, their increased ask was 100 and, 140, $145,000 was the increase. They've reduced that by 105,000, so they, KB Ambulance will still be receiving an increase of $40,000 over the current subsidy. The other decrease is with the department, District Department of Health, so NDDH, NDDH Board of Directors did meet and set their budget, which provide, which resulted in a $1 per capita increase. We had in your prev, in the first round, we had budgeted for 1.75 mil, per capita increase, so we were able to take that little bit of savings and dropping it down to $1 per capita increase versus the 1.75, so that's the 13,000. And then the special reserves contingency, in my original budget that I presented to the town council, I had recommended increasing that contingency by 25,000, so the contingency account is for really those unexpected things that happen through the year. So many of you might remember, two years ago, in the middle of the winter, we had to close the community center because we had a hot water heater that failed, and we had the squirrels playing Macbeth in the, in the theater. And so we needed to hire a pest control company to come in, and we had to take down some trees, and we had to manage that. We don't budget for catastrophic failures like that, that's what the contingency is for. So that way, the town council doesn't have to look to do a supplemental appropriation in the middle of the year, which can be very damaging to our credit rating. So this is how they manage that, by the, by the contingency. I had recommended increasing that by 25,000 because costs have dramatically increased over the last two years, and when we do have a failure, that cost is usually substantially higher than what we were seeing in the past. The town council decided to remove that additional 25,000 and just level fund that contingency into the next year. So that reduced the general government side of the budget by 218,000. And then for the Board of Education, again, I indicated that that reduction was 1.5 million. So that provides an estimated mill rate of 25.85 mills or an increase of .71 mills. The next few are going over what is those impacts. So I, the previous slide, I think it was like slide four or five, I had a, slide five, I showed the picture of a pie chart that showed what the overall net increases were by the categories going into public hearing. This is after the town council's deliberated. This is what the major driving forces are. So as you can see, the largest component of the increase is with debt service, and we're going to have to make that debt service payment. The other components, the town operations, support of education, are smaller pieces of those pies, along with human services subsidy, but those, these are the net increases, the net changes to the budget that are, that are impacting mill rate. The next couple of slides are really going over just broad picture. So broad picture, our budget revenue in total. As you can see, the largest portion of our revenue for this budget is property taxes, followed by educational revenue, and that's our education cost sharing and other grants and some of the other educational revenues that we receive to offset education, followed by lake road generating, and then we have use of fund balance this year for capital projects, and we have 3% of state grants, and then 6% is all those other fees that we collect at the town hall, and I would say like, think, you know, the charges that you have to pay for building permits or for town clerk fees or all of those other aspects. That's the remaining 6%, as well as our investment income that we receive. The next slide is our overall expenditures. Where does the, where does, in totality, where does all of the rev, the total expenses pan out? And as you can see, the Board of Education is the largest portion of that. And then followed, we have town operations is just, is at 19%. Debt service is at 7%. Capital improvements are at 8%, and then we have some smaller categories in there. So that's the overall, that kind of 30,000 view of where do those expenses, where do those revenues get expended to? And we're going to drill down into just town operations. Town operations, these are all the different categories of town operations and how that budget is expended. Our largest driver is public works, and followed pretty closely by our employee benefits and then general government. The public works is, you know, the, the maintenance of the roads as well as our, our entire fleet, and they maintain not just, not just the highway fleet, but they also maintain our police cruisers as well as our, you know, fleet that we use for our building inspectors, fire marshals, all of those other bil, uh, equipment. They also maintain all of the parks equipment and the sub equipment that goes with it. So think your loaders and your bucket trucks, and all of those get maintained within that, within that budget. Our fuel is also all in the public works line item. I did separate out in this from the public health and safety line item. I did separate out the student resource officer and the armed security officer program to reflect that separately as that is reimbursed by the Board of Education, so while it is listed in all of our expenses, it does have an offsetting revenue on the town side. It is built into the Board of Education's budget. So what does this, what does this mill rate mean to me? What does this proposed budget mean to me from a tax standpoint, from a bill standpoint? So this slide really just gives kind of benchmarks. I think most of us know what our property, what our house value is. I did put a link on here so you can go to a tax calculator page on our website. You can also look up your property card, and I encourage everyone to look up their property card, especially if you've recently purchased a home in, in town. Many, our market prices have changed pretty dramatically, but your property value that you're paying on is not necessarily based on what you just purchased that home for. It's based on what the market value of that home was five, almost five years ago. We're getting ready to go through that revaluation, so you definitely want to look at what that market value was, you know, four to five years ago. That's what the actual property, unless you've done a major change to your property, that's what your property card is going to reflect. So if your property value is $200,000, we, we tax on only 70% of that. That's what's called the assessed value. We, you're taxed on 70% of that. So the assessed value is 140,000. This proposed mill rate of .71 mills would result in an annual tax increase of $99.40. I did include a monthly, I broke that down into a monthly number two because many people have escrows, so many people, it's built into your mortgage, and so you want to know what's it going to impact my mortgage? What's my mortgage payment going to change? So that's just to give you an indication of what that mortgage number is going to change. So again, this is just to give you benchmarks of, you know, so you can kind of gauge where does my house fall into this metrics. But again, I recommend that everyone go and look up your, your property cards, you can understand what your property is valued at and what it's, what the assessed value is, so that way you can do that calculation and understand what that change is. Just as a reminder, this meeting adjourns to a budget referendum or machine vote, so the, this isn't, this budget is not finalized, is a final decision tonight. The numbers that come up out of tonight's meeting will go to a machine vote. That happens on Tuesday, May 9th, so next Tuesday, May 9th, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the, at the normal polling locations. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to ask the superintendent to come up and present the Board of Education budget.
Good evening. I'm Bob Angeli, Superintendent for the Killenly Public Schools, and I'm proud to be here presenting the Board of Education's budget on their behalf. You'll see many of the board members are here this evening, as well as our Assistant Superintendent and our Manager of Business Affairs. So this first slide really is just a outline of our budget development process. We start developing the school budget in early October of the year prior to the, the year that we're budgeting for, and as you can see, we work our way through several meetings, either internally in the district with administrators, or the board itself holds three budget workshop sessions after I present a preliminary budget to the board at the end of January. And then in March, we bring the superintendent's proposed budget to the board for action, and then that budget is sent to the town council. The town council can act on it, which it did this year. Then we had the public hearing, and tonight we're here for the town meeting, and then the next step would be the referendum vote on May 9th. So the board, when we put our budget together, we keep in mind goals, so we want to budget money in the areas that support the board's goals, and the board has four goals. You can see the first two goals on this slide. Goal one is around academic achievement, so helping our students perform better in school. Goal two is around talent development, so that is us recruiting, hiring, and maintaining staff, and then providing professional development for staff and other growth opportunities for them so that they could enhance their professional skills. The third goal is around organizational system, so this is a facilities goal to maintain and improve our facilities, to ensure that students have access to digital learning tools. But this also involves, you know, beneath those layers, improving systems within the school so that we operate more effectively and more efficiently. Goal number four is around the school culture and climate. The goals in this area really pertain to making our schools safe, welcoming, friendly, caring, learning environment for our students, and the same as a welcoming environment for parents and family members to come, and then the same would also apply for the people that work in our school system. Next slide. And this slide here is the profile of the graduate that was developed around four or five years ago. This is a, very much a living document within the district. It is used often to help guide decision-making around the educational programs and improvements that we're bringing into the district for the students, but also how we budget and the types of professional development opportunities we provide staff. Next slide. So the board tries to do two different things, right? We, we need to maintain those goals and move this district forward for the betterment of our students and community, but we also want to be efficient and fiscally responsible when we do so. So we try to build a budget that is respectful of the citizens of Killenly so that it doesn't become overburdenous some for people to support the school system. Next slide. So how do we control the budget? Well, there's two different ways. We can look to streamline our operations, and so sometimes that means position cuts or programs to change or other items that we can modify or eliminate within the budget to keep spending at a controlled pace. And then we also look for alternative funding sources. So the educational budget, while a good portion of it does come from local taxes, we also seek out grant opportunities to support educational programming for the students. And then just at the bottom of the slide are some of the drivers that we've been experiencing for this budget. Just, just recently, we received two bills from organizations that run magnet schools. We learned that they are increasing their tuition for us, one organization by 10%, another organization by 14%. So our, our Killenly students who opt to go to a magnet school, we're going to have those increases for tuition. We have no say in that unless we're a partner district. We do partner with East Con for the middle college, high school here at the community college, and so we do have a vote in what that increase is going to be, and I'll, I'm happy to say that the increase for that tuition is much lower than these other two organizations. And then, you know, the, that's the current inflation rate through March, we're at a 5%. So the board's approved budget of 3.94 is already under the rate of inflation. And then we have increased costs for labor, you know, examples of salaries and benefits in in contracts that we have to engage in for services, right? So later there'll be a slide, you know, where is all the money in an educational budget? Most of it is tied up in people, our own people and then the people that work for the organizations that provide services for the school system. And that could be anything from waste management, right? We contract out for trash and recycling and it could be to supply direct services to our students. Next slide. So the Board of Education budget, you'll see that I brought in a budget in March that was a 5.3% increase and the Board of Education approved a budget of a 3.94% increase. Both of those percents are well within the range of what we're seeing in Connecticut this year and regionally there are budget numbers that are higher than that. A couple of area towns are right around 8% at this time. Next slide. So the, to go from the preliminary budget down to my budget, so you'll see at the top of this slide, the preliminary budget really was what came out of the schools, what the principals heard from their teachers within their building and other employees within each of their schools and then also what came in from district level departments like special education. And so you could see there that the preliminary budget was 8.05% increase and then decision packages means new things that people wanted to bring into the district. So that could be new staff, it could be a new vehicle. We don't have any vehicles in the budget for this year, but we have had in the past, right? We have to buy trucks and things for the operations and maintenance, vans for transportation. The town actually budgets for buses for the school system. So the combined for the preliminary budget, we're at 12.11% possible increase and going, thinking back to the previous slide, right? We understood that that was not going to be fiscally responsible to bring that to the residents of Killingley and ask for that kind of an increase. So we cut that 12.11 down to 5.30 and you could see that we made some budget adjustments, right? So we went through the budget and we found if there were any areas that we could make School systems tend to run in the black, right? Because if you run in the red, that creates all kinds of things, issues locally, right? If we were running in the red, we'd have to go back to the town council and ask for a reappropriation, another allocation of funding, right? And no school system wants to do that. So school systems tend to run in the red and, excuse me, in the black. And so when you have unexpended funds in your budget, you could use those funds to offset costs for the next school year by buying things, right? So you cannot carry that money over for salaries and benefits and things like that. But if you have things in your budget, so supplies, equipment, that, that kind of thing, you could buy them in advance and bring them into your schools early rather than waiting for the next school year. So we're proposing to use just over 600,000 for that. And then those decision packages, we took out several of the positions that were being asked for and we reduce, so the total reduction, 6.81. And so the budget that I brought to the board was at 5.3. Next slide. So this just gives you a little bit of idea of what the budget adjustments were. So we moved some items to grants. As I said, we look for alternatives, funding sources, but when we move things into the grant, the grants were already, the funds in those grants were already being identified for other purchases. So if we moved anything into a grant, then we, then we lost what was in the grant, right? So we deemed whatever we moved into that grant to be of higher priority than what we already had in the grant. So we moved some things into the grants. We're estimating on retirements. So far this year, we don't have a lot of teachers resigning for the purpose of retirement. And then we made some additional reductions of 410,000 and you could see what those are there. So that was a 2.03% reduction just for budget adjustments. Next slide. And then the surplus purchasing, again, things that we could buy now and bring into the district early rather than later. So these will be supplies, textbooks, equipment and property. That was another 1.34% reduction. Next slide. The decision packages, so we whittled down the decision packages to just these four positions. And so that is then an increase of .62% for those four positions. Next slide, please. And then budget history. So going back to the 15, 16 school year, you could see that my budget request was the third highest in that range. You'll see the same for the budget approved by the board. And then for the adopted budget, we don't know that yet because that, that'll take place at the referendum. Whatever the group that's here tonight sends forward to referendum, that's what gets voted on. Next slide. So the board's budget summary by object code. So you could see as you go down, the first line item is salaries and then you have benefits. So the salaries are going up and in that line item, it goes up by one point, just over 1.6 and then for the total impact to the budget is just under 1%. Then the benefits, overall impact to the budget, 0.18%. And then as you work your way through, so the purchase services and then there's multiple lines there, 300, 400, 500, that's the purchase services. That's the waste management. That could be speech and language services that we had to outsource because we haven't been able to fill some positions within the district. It could be when we have to outsource transportation because as you know, we've been having issues getting fully staffed in our transportation department. It could be other direct services to students, for instance, for physical therapy, things like that. And then it's also if we are hiring organizations to come in and provide professional development for our staff, right? That would be in there as well, right? So why the increases? These are the biggest items within the lines of the budget. So salaries are going up, that's .55 of the three, .94. The armed security guards, right? With all the tragedies that are occurring in schools around our country, the Board of Education and I really felt strongly that we needed to increase our capacity to keep students and staff safe. So it was established a partnership with the town that they would hire armed security officers and then we would pay their, their salaries, benefits, uniforms, et cetera. And so we've been able to fill two of the five positions, so there's still three vacancies there. But once all those positions are filled, so that's $417,000 basically for the budget for next year, that's almost a percent by itself out of the 3.94. Decision packages, again, those four positions, a school psychologist, part-time custodian, increase our family and consumer science teacher to full-time and then a business office assistant so that we can have more efficiency within the business office. And then contingency, so for the current school year, if you look at that budget, generally the Board of Education doesn't budget anything in contingency. But this year, we actually had a negative number in contingency and that is because the budget that we have for this year was a 0% increase, but we took a risk and decided that we wouldn't eliminate anything to go from the board's proposed budget down to zero. And then if we needed to, we would tap into the non-lapsing account. So the non-lapsing account is when a school district ends in the black, that money is returned to the municipality. The municipal, if the municipality has established a non-lapsing account, then the fiscal agency of that municipality, which is our town council here in Killingley, they can deposit some of that money into a non-lapsing account that the Board of Education has access to. And so we have a non-lapsing account. It's currently capped at $2 million and we decided that we would kind of create a little, a little bit of a financial safety net, so to speak, with the non-lapsing account. So we didn't cut anything for this school year, knowing that if we need, if we were going to run into the red, then we were going to use a non-lapsing account. And so that was 275,671. So because that was in a negative number in last year's budget, to bring it back to zero, you have to add that money into the, into the budget for next year, right? And so that's where you get the .61 increase there. And then everything else across the budget was equal to 1.23 and so you get an increase of 1,775,319 or 3.94%. And that is what the board approved at its March 8th meeting. Next slide, please. So these are a couple of other things that we had to do to get from my budget down to the board's budget. So again, thinking back to the previous slide where we look for alternative funding sources or we look to make changes in staffing and programs, you'll see that we had a reduction of seven certified staff positions for a total of 578,278. A reduction of two non-certified staff positions, that's 34,976. So we had to have some staff reductions to get down to that 3.94. And, you know, just so that you know, there were already 16 part-time paraprofessional positions that were eliminated to get to the superintendent's budget of 5.3. So we're, we're, we eliminated staffing positions to get to my proposed budget and then we eliminated more staff positions to get to the board's adopted budget of 3.94. Next slide, please. So revenue projections, Ms. Calorio already spoke to you about the projections, so I won't belabor that, but I will confirm that our revenues that come in, which then become revenues for the town, so the money doesn't come directly to the school system, but the town uses that projected revenue to build the overall budget for the town and then to make a recommendation as to what the school system budget should be, right? And so we are anticipating having fewer students coming into the district from surrounding towns and so that's the bulk of the reduction in the revenue projections at this time. Next slide. And then this slide, hopefully you have a paper copy, but this is all the grants that the school system has been applying for and then attained to help support the budget. And so some of them are the ones that are around COVID, right? So there was the COVID relief funds and then there was the Esser 1, Esser 2, ARP Esser. So the COVID relief funds have come and gone, Esser 1 have come and gone. Esser 2 will age out this coming September and then they will be gone. And then the last COVID-related grant that will have one more year is the ARP Esser and that will go away in September 2024. And what we did is those things that were in the Esser 2 grant that we wanted one more year of, we used the ARP Esser to extend those things for one more year. So those would be staff and services that we wouldn't lose. Next slide, please. So again, the board's budget that was adopted on March 8th, 46,805,118. That was an increase over current year budget of 1,775,319 or 3.94%. Next slide. All right, so I entitled this slide, "The Elephant in the Room," right? And so every year that I've been here, I've been asked about why does the Board of Education give money back to the town, right? And so that becomes the elephant in the room because people think that the Board of Education is being overfunded, that's why it gives the money back to the town. But that really hasn't been true, right? So I said earlier that school systems generally run in the black and end the year with some kind of a surplus. There is a state law that says that boards of education, up to 2% of that, of their annual budget, if they end in the black, they could ask the fiscal agent within the town, so again, that would be the town council here in Killingley, to have that money put into a non-lapsing account, right? So it's a state law, so it's school systems all across the state end in the black. Generally, not as high as we have been ending in the black due to COVID, right? So during the COVID years, you had a budget and then you didn't, we, right? We couldn't offer sports, we couldn't offer field trips. There were things that we could not do during the pandemic that were already in the budget. That money went back to the town. Then out of the pandemic also came shortage in staff across all areas in education, but those of you not in education, I'm sure in your lives, either your working life or your personal lives, you have experienced staff shortages where you work or if you go out to eat, the restaurants aren't staffed. You see help wanted signs everywhere, right? There's, people are just not applying for the jobs. And so this year, we are going to end the year in a surplus even though we had a 0% increase and that is because we have not been able to staff our schools. So we're short teachers, we're short paraprofessionals, those are the two biggest groups. But some of those teaching positions were also specialists, so we're short social workers, we're short speech and language pathologists. And so when we're short in those areas, then we have to contract out for the services. So you'll see this year, right now, we're projecting a 1.6, right? And we're, we want to use 600 grand of that for buying things for next year. But you'll see that 1.48- But you'll see that 1.48 of that is staff salaries and benefits. So had we been able to staff to our fullest, the surplus that we would have would be $120,000, right? So we are not over-budgeting, we just are understaffed, right? And so I just want that to be clear. And, and that money doesn't follow us into next year. So some people have asked, well, you got this surplus, can't you use that for salaries for next year? No, we cannot, right? So that, that doesn't follow us till the next year. So the surplus goes back to the town for the general fund. Next slide, please. So the town council recommended a reduction of our budget down to .61 or 1.5 million, right? So if that becomes our final budget, we, we have to find that money and take it out some way, somehow. Next slide, please. So where is the money in an educational budget? It's tied to people. So you'll see in our budget proposal of the 3.94%, 75% of that is salaries and benefits for our staff, the people that work in this district, employed by this district. You'll see that 22% is for purchasing services. So that's basically paying people who work for other organizations to do work for our district. And again, that could be direct services for our students, it could be direct services for our staff, or it could be behind the, behind-the-scenes things like hiring plumbers to fix sewer lines, waste management, hiring electricians, et cetera, to do contracted work for the district. And then everything else in the budget is just 3%. Everything, everything else is just 3%. Next slide. So if you have to cut $1.5 million, what does that mean for the district? It means that we have to look at staff, because that's where the money is, right? So I could tell you that our staff had been concerned, because there were, you know, as soon as you start talking about these things, there's rumor mills, right? And so we had some teachers concerned that I was going to take all the money out of teacher salaries. So you could see that if, if that was the tactic that we would use to cut 1.5 million, we're talking 25 or more teaching positions, and there's, there's no way that the district could accommodate that. So we, we, we aren't, we're not overstaffed, we're understaffed, right? So I can't, I can't do that. Some people, because I had mentioned administration, some people thought I was going to take it all out of administration. So if I were to do that, that would be 10 or more administrative positions, right? Basically, we'd cut the administration team in half in this district, and I can't do that, right? Because we need the, we need positions to run our schools and to run departments. So it's going to be a combination of things, things that we haven't quite identified yet to, to the fullest. So I'm not going to stand here and tell you, we're going to lose this position, this position, this position, this program, this program, because we haven't identified it yet. But I'll, I'll tell you, we're looking at almost every single area in the budget where things may not be required, or none of them are easy or good decisions, so we'll try to pick the ones that are least impactful for our students, right? And so we've been looking at sports programs, the decision packages, again, that's a school psychologist. This district only has one school psychologist for five schools. I've worked in districts where there was one or two in every school, right? I'm, I'm just trying to get a second one to serve the whole district, right? But that could be something that we might have to lose. The part-time custodian that was for the Goodyear program, the business assistant, or increasing our family and consumer science teacher to full-time. We currently have a part-time position, we want to be able to offer more early childhood and foods classes for the students, they're popular courses, and there are student interests there, so we want to increase that. So we are also looking at nursing staff, our IT support staff, other non-certified positions. There's a request to do a little mini renovation in the IT workroom, we would likely forego that. Memberships, that's in professional organizations, right? So we have teachers and administrators that are affiliated with many different professional organizations. The Board is a member of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Ed, right? So we would be looking at those professional organizations, and do we need to continue paying for the memberships in those? Subscriptions, that would be for online literature, but it could also be for online learning platforms, right? So during the pandemic, we went to a lot of online discussion, we retained some of the, we, we discontinued some of them, but we maintained subscriptions to some of those online platforms. Should we consider not using all of them and just maintaining the ones that we think are the most critical? So earlier I said we were looking at pre-spending $600,000. Is there any other spring spending that we haven't yet identified? So we're looking at that. And then similar to what we did this year, is there a dollar amount that would be appropriate to say, okay, let's build another safety net out of the non-lapsing account, so we don't have to cut everything that's been proposed to be cut? We just have to know that whatever that safety net is, that's an automatic increase for the next year, just like the, the, the money became an automatic increase for the budget that's being proposed for next school year, that $275,000 and change. Next slide, please. So Ms. Calorio already spoke to this about the mill rate and your taxes. So I, I think our numbers came off just a little bit different from yours, and so it must be a rounding thing. And I only, we only use one example, and that's a house worth $250,000. So the tax would be approximately $124 per year or 10.33 per month increase. If the Board's budget is maintained at 3.94, that same tax, it would be $313.25 per year. That would be an increase of $26.10 a month. So it is more, right? Obviously, it's a higher number, so it is more money. But you can see on the bottom, restoring it would, it would increase your $124 per year by another $189.25, or an additional $15.77 a month if the Board of Education's budget is restored to 3.94. Next slide, please. And then student enrollment, we show this slide every year, but you'll see that we have increasing student enrollment. You know, sometimes it's easier to talk about reductions if your student body is going down, but our student body is increasing. Next slide. And this gives you an idea of class sizes at the elementary level, and what's important here is if we have teacher cuts at the elementary level, generally, that means class sizes will go up, right? And for your youngest learners, the research shows that smaller class sizes are better for your youngest learners. At the high school level, when you cut teachers, that means that you can offer fewer sections of a course. So let's say you were offering six sections of biology, but then you cut a biology teacher, that's going to decrease the, the sections of biology, and that puts constraints on the students as they try to schedule all the classes that they need, and class size goes up. All right, next slide. Questions and comments? So start with Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Anjly. At this time, again, anyone who would like to make any comments, step up to one of the microphones, state your name and address. If you are looking to make a motion or a second, we also need you to state your name and address. So at this time, we're calling for discussion on the general government budget. So anyone that would like to come up and make comment regards to the general government budget or make any motions, now's the time to do so.
Point of order. If a motion is going to consider a change to the Board of Ed budget, but also a revenue side issue on the town government budget, how do we do that if you're splitting up the discussion and motions to one side versus the other?
So each, just as an explanation, so the town votes on each of the expenditure budgets independently, so that's why we take up each of the expenditure sides. The proposals are in the expenditure side, not the revenue side. So your motions are related to expenditure changes, not the revenue changes.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
At this time, would anyone like to make any comments or motions regarding the general government budget?
My name is Monique Revellise, and I live at 14 Palmer Street, Apartment B, Danielson. I'd like to make a motion.
The clerk didn't catch your name and address.
Monique Revellise, R-E-V-E-L-L-E-S-E, 14 Palmer Street, Apartment B, Danielson.
Thank you, you can go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the town's budget for an increase of $1 for
Where are you putting that increase when you do anything on the town budget side? It has to be done per line item.
We can add that in.
Yeah, which, which department are you looking to add the $1 into? And specifically, whether it's personnel, contractual services, or materials and supplies?
Contractual.
Contractual into what department?
Building inspector?
I'm sorry?
Building inspector. What department would that be?
So building, building safety and, okay, so contractual services for a building safety department for a dollar.
And that's it. So the whole town general government appropriation would be $12,649,173. So I would like to reduce it by $367,828.
The, the, I think I need to make a clarification for, right now. When you're making motions to change the town government side, you cannot, on the Board of Education's side, when you make a motion to change the amount, whether increase or decrease, it is over the whole budget. On the town side, if you want to increase or decrease anything, you have to go by that specific line item. To give you an example, if we were, if you wanted to reduce, we'll go town government side, we'll go Department 1. If you want to do something like reduce materials and supplies for the town council, you would make a motion to reduce line item 50401 by a certain amount, or increase it by a certain amount. There is no provision to make an overall decrease or overall increase on the town side, everything has to be done line item by line item.
All right, then I guess I take back the amendment, the motion, rather.
Michelle Murphy, 325 Breakneck Hill Road. I'd like to make a motion, line item 50150, Department 24, to eliminate the open mechanic position, $44,877 plus benefits totaling $68,889.
Michelle, I just want to make sure I have the numbers written down correctly. $44,000, because it's kind of echoey up here, 44,000 what?
877 is the position.
875?
77.
77, okay. And then the...
The benefits were $24,012.
$24,012 and...
$12.
$12, and that's coming from Department 61.
Central garage, Department 24.
The benefits will come out of Department 61.
61, yeah.
61, yeah. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify the motion.
Is there a second? Can you state your name and address, please?
Can you come to the microphone, so that way we can get it on the record? Sorry.
Sarah, S-A-R-A, Sumner, S-U-M-N-E-R, 23, Tamarak, T-A-M-A-R-A-C-K, Circle in Devoe.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have a motion and a second to reduce these two line items. Anyone who would like to make comment regarding this, you're more than welcome to come up to the microphone and speak, just state your name and address. I will address this as far as, this is something that the town council had been looking at. It is a position that right now is vacant for a mechanic at the town garage. We did have this job posted, we had, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Calorio, we had no applicant for, who had applied for this position while it was posted. We didn't have any qualified applicants that applied for the position. So this is something that the town council had considered, and as I said, this is not a job where someone actually has a position and we're cutting, this is cutting from a vacant position.
And if I can, so just to give additional context, we had stopped the recruitment process as we were going through the budgetary process when the town council was considering. We will continue that pause pending outcome of this meeting. But the, the, we have three mechan, we have traditionally three mechanics. This position has only been vacant since the end of December. The mechanics maintain all of the fleets. We have over 120 pieces of equipment and vehicles that the mechanics are maintaining. So what would, what would it mean to reduce this position and not fill that position? It means that as we go forward, we'll probably need to contract out some of those repairs, some of those repairs that we would do in-house. We'll have to go to a contract, to another garage, and we'll be paying the higher rates on those. So... So that would likely be the impact, will increase what those contractual services costs are. And just for everyone that's kind of doing the math, based on the information given, this would result in a decrease to the mill rate proposed of .05 mils. I'd just like to make sure everyone is fully aware.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. If this...
We...
Uh, just state your name and address.
Andy Whitehead, 81, Gloria Ave, Danielson. Have we evaluated the additional cost as opposed to having the mechanic on, on staff?
I don't have a cost analysis to provide you at the moment tonight. It's really going to depend on what repairs we have that need to be done. We will have to look and see how much our two remaining mechanics will be able to perform on a preventative maintenance schedule to determine what preventative maintenance will now have to be scheduled out to contractual, to a contracted garage, because they're just not going to have enough time to perform that preventative maintenance. So I don't necessarily have that number to hand you tonight.
And that has been vacant for only a couple of months, right?
Correct, that has been vacant only since December.
I'd like to make a comment. My name is Carol Cooper Riley. I live at 100 Cook Hill Road in Danielson. I worked for the town garage for 27 years, and to say that you want to reduce a mechanic is not a good idea. The mechanics work a lot, and like Mary said, you're going to be contracting out other services, which are going to cost you a lot more. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Gloria, this position, is this a part-time or full-time position?
This is a full-time position.
And based off the salary of $44,000, that's approximately 21 an hour?
Um, so the, the, the union contract, it's a union contracted position, so the union, the rate is set by union contract, and I believe that that position is closer to $25 or $26 an hour. I don't have the union contract number off the top of my head. We, we have this number, this $44,000 doesn't, there's an, there's an increase in that budget for contractual wage increase, so that's why you're only reducing the 44. But, so it's about 20, I think it's about 25 or 26. I'd have to look at the number again, but it is, you know, if you're looking at market rate, it is lower than market, and you know, that's a conversation that I need to have with the council with regards to that position going forward. But again, we haven't continued to look at filling that position pending outcome of this conversation, so we would have to move forward with that subsequently.
Thank you. Just to give you a reference point, I recently saw two mechanics positions, being the fact that I'm in the field at another town in eastern Connecticut, and the base pay was substantially higher, which may be why we didn't have any qualified applicants for this position at that pay scale that we're at. Any further comments? Seeing none at this time, I will call for a vote. The motion was to reduce line 24-501 by an amount of $44,877 and reduce line 61-50230 for $24,012. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
You, okay, I could not determine by a voice vote, so at this time, I'm going to call for a vote again, and when I ask for a vote for, for and against, I just ask everyone to stand up so we can do a head count. Would all those who are in favor of this, stand? Okay, you can sit down now. That was 28. All those opposed, please stand? Okay, all right, so the motion fails. Oh, we still, all right, we, I apologize, we have to do, we had, the town clerk let us know we got to do a full count. No, definitely fails, it's just a matter of having the right number. I had 48. Thank you, you may, you may be seated. There was a total of 48 no votes, this motion fails. At this time, we'll open up again for any comments or motions.
Michelle Murphy, Breakneck Hill Road, line item, oh, so Department 09, Mary, Town Commission, line item 50297, temporary commissions, $1,000, it's not being used year after year. I make a motion that we cut that from the budget.
So there is, there's a motion to remove $1,000 from line item 50297? Is there a second? Andy Whitehead, seconded the motion. I will open up for discussion.
So just to give context as to why that is in the budget, the town council through the years can sometimes form independent or temporary commissions. This goes to manage any recording secretary work that needs to be done, as well as the copies to generate any of the reports for that commission. The past several years, the council has not formed any temporary commissions, but we have usually maintained that in the budget to be able to manage if the council decides to form, and I think one of the last ones that was formed was with regards to the, the law enforcement commission. The council has mentioned in their goals that they were looking to formulate like a vision, vision commission or a committee to evaluate long-term vision and goal for the, for the community. So that's what that temporary commissions is for, at $1,000.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? The motion is to reduce line item 50297, Department 09, for an amount of $1,000. Uh, page in the budget book, it's D9. It's approximately three-quarters of the way down the page. And I have a question, Ms. Gloria, when we're doing things like this, getting down into the line items, is there a way we could put that slide up so people could see what page we're on?
I don't want to...
Or would that, okay, you don't have that in your slide pack? Okay, thank you. Is there any further comments?
I'm Charles Furland, I live at 86 Knox Avenue in, I guess we're supposed to say Killingley now, not Danielson. And just so I understand, the, I just did the calculation on the slide that dealt with the amount of increase in taxes. What impact would this $1,000 have on the $639 that my taxes will go up if the town council budget is adopted and the increase in the school board budget?
It's a reduction in the mill rate of .07, so less than .01 mils. Very minor change.
Thank you. Any other comments? So we have a motion and a second, at this time, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? No? Okay, so we are going to do a standing vote. All those in favor, please stand. Thank you. Now I'll ask all those who are opposed, please stand. We had 38 in favor, 22 opposed, the motion passes. At this time, we'll ask for any more comments or motions.
Michelle Murphy, Breakneck Hill Road, Department 28, line item 50434, from sand and gravel, Mary, cut $1,000. Out of 10,000, we haven't been reaching that mark. Every year, we have a surplus.
$1,000.
Sand and gravel. So that was line number 50434. You want to reduce that $1,000, bring it down to $9,000. That is Department 28, it is page D17 in the budget packet. Is there a second? That was Ula Barclay that seconded that?
Yes.
I will open up for discussion at this time.
Okay, so this is in the highway maintenance, the sand and gravel that's there, that line item is for drainage work to be done through drainage repair work and for drainage along the roads and any other smaller capital, smaller repair items. The last, the previous two years, we did not expend that fully because a lot of the drainage work was done in capital projects. This year, we're expecting to fully expend that for sand and gravel. So going forward, we would be reducing the amount of repair work that would be done for drainage along the road sides. That would result in a decrease... Hang on. That would result in a decrease to the mill rate of .003. So again, less than, point, smaller fraction than a mil, than a .01 mil.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Charles Furland, 86 Knox Avenue, Danielson, Connecticut, living near a dirt road where there are always up or downs drive, there's always potholes. What impact would this have on people that live on dirt roads? Because Killingley does have, we, a number of dirt roads, miles of dirt roads, and what impact would this reduction have on that? impact would this reduction have on that? Because they're, they're growing as they do every winter. And I want to compliment the highway department. They do an excellent job. Just as I think we're going to have problems, they come along and they take care of it.
Right. So this would reduce the availability for them to purchase materials for fixing and maintaining those dirt roads. It's usually done with that sand and gravel as well as, you know, addressing those, those potholes as we go through.
Thank you.
Michelle Murphy, Breakneck Hill Road. I'd like to withdraw that then if it's going to do that.
And Ms. Barclay, would you like to withdraw your second?
I'll withdraw my second.
So that motion has been withdrawn and the second was withdrawn. At this time, we'll ask for any other comments or motions on the town government, general government budget. Last call for comments or motions on the budget. Seeing none, we'll now move on. Next, we'll ask for any comments or motions to the Board of Education budget. And I just want to remind everyone that when you're making adjustments to the Board of Education budget, you can't pick certain items. Any adjustments would be made to the overall budget.
Lisa Vance, sorry, two sixty-two Mason Hill Road, East Killingley. I moved just this week across town, and although my home is a mess of unpacked boxes, I felt it critically important to be here tonight. As well as being a long-term, longtime resident, I'm also a thirty-seven-year veteran teacher all those years in Killingley. I'm retiring this year, although Bob says not many of us are, and this puts me in a different position from years past. I worry about the current economic climate more. I worry if I'll be able to afford health care package, the one that I currently am fortunate to have. I'm now a proud member, card-carrying member of the AARP. So I'm at a point in my life where I'll be living on a fixed income, and so I have all the worries that come with that. All that notwithstanding, I'm here in an effort to have you raise my taxes more than the current proposal. You see, I believe that to have a well-informed, productive citizenry and a thriving town, we need to invest in our children. I'm appalled by the cuts the town council has asked of our school district, especially in comparison to the town side of the budget. The difference is egregious and sends a clear message that public education in Killingley is undervalued. With the proposed budget, significant cuts will be made to both programs and staff. Killingley families will pay the price. I urge you to listen to the parents and other concerned constituents who will ask you to invest in Killingley's future by restoring the three point nine four percent increase in the Board of Ed budget and so investing in our children and the future of our town. Thank you.
Christian Serentopoulos, one forty-three School Street in Danielson. I just probably answer a question that might arise. I am not a resident of the town of Killingley, but I am a taxpayer in the town of Killingley. I pay property taxes with my business, my motor vehicle through the business, and my personal property with the business, and therefore am eligible to speak and vote this evening. I have been a longtime tied-to-resident ever since I was born, having graduated Killingley High School in nineteen eighty-six, raised my family for the first twelve years I lived in Killingley, and have had my business here since nineteen ninety-four through the present. I make a motion to restore forty-five thousand dollars to the Board of Education budget. The purpose of this motion is while I cannot direct where that money should be spent, I stand here in support of reinstatement of the part-time Latin program in the town of Killingley. It's a small program, but that program was started in nineteen eighty-three, I believe, or nineteen eighty-four, when I was a freshman at Killingley. And I went through four years during my four-year period where this very thing came to pass. During my second year having taken Latin, the town, in its wisdom, chose to cut it out of the budget my junior year, and I was faced with the situation not having a language option while still trying to apply to four-year institutions which require it. I was fortunate that my, the following year, the Board of Education and the town council in the town restored that position, and I was able to take my third year and then went on to Yale, graduated UConn Law School, and I'm a practicing attorney in town. Since that time, it is one of the, one of the very best programs that Killingley has to offer its students. And while a large number of students do not participate in the program, all of those that do go on to successful careers and use that program not only in the sciences, medicine, law, and very, and many, many other vocations. I have a question for the superintendent, and that is what is the per-student revenue that comes in for a student that comes from another town into Killingley? Just an approximate number, please.
So the, the approximate number there is around eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay. So we're talking forty-five thousand dollars into the budget. You lose three students, and you will. You'll, you'll lose most of them. They'll head to Woodstock, they'll head to E.O. Smith, they'll head to NFA, they'll go anywhere that that program is available, the existing students, because they need that program to get into college. And you're going to lose students from surrounding towns, not a large number, but a small number of students that want to come to Killingley because we have the very best program, Latin program in the area and have had it for years. That number, you lose three students because you've cut this program, and you're in the hole and your taxes will go up. By restoring the forty-five thousand dollars, you will save money, even though this will mean a tax increase of approximately zero point two six mil increase. If your home is appraised at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and assessed at two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, that's less than five dollars per year or fifty cents a month. So go ahead and cut the forty-five thousand dollars out. You don't have that program, and your taxes are going to go up next year and the following year and the following year after that, because you're not going to have students come into Killingley High School. Not only is the program one of the very best programs that Killingley has and needs to stay in this budget, but it is fiscally irresponsible to even propose the cut. And I think the taxpayers of the town of Killingley understand both of those arguments. So again, my motion is to restore forty-five thousand dollars to the Board of Education budget, and I would hope at a future Board of Education meeting that the Board of Education will put that specific forty-five thousand dollars to restore that program. Thank you.
If you could stand by the microphone for one second, we're just going to make a clarification here before we ask for a second. In order to be able to vote or make a motion, you have to be either a registered voter who is a U.S. citizen and are at least eighteen years of age. Those who are residents who are not registered voters are eligible if they own property assessed at a thousand dollars or more on the October first, two thousand twenty-two grand list. The items you had referenced being your business and your vehicles, are they registered in solely your name?
Your personal name.
Your personal name, because this becomes a...
The, the real estate is.
The real estate is in Christian Serentopoulos?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So check the grand list.
No, not John. John is my father. The deed is in my individual name, along with my wife's, Rachel. So because the assessor's records are not correct, the deed is in my name and my wife's name, they have it in an LLP name. Apparently, I can't make that motion. So I request that another taxpayer come up and make a motion.
We, we can only go by what's on the grand list, October first, two thousand twenty-two.
Well, it's unfortunate the records aren't correct.
Which is where the, as the town manager just told me, that's where the tax bill got sent out to. That was the name on a tax bill.
Susan Griffiths, seventy Griffiths Road, Killingley, Connecticut. I would like to move that forty-four thousand dollars be put back into the Board of Education budget for all the reasons Mr. Serentopoulos has mentioned.
Thank you. So we have a motion to move forty-five thousand dollars back into the Board of Education budget. Is there a second for this motion?
I have a second.
Okay. You've got that on record? Okay. Thank you. At this time, I will open up for discussion. Seeing none, I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That one was easy.
Susan Griffiths, seventy Griffiths Road, Killingley, Connecticut. I'm not as eloquent as Mr. Serentopoulos, but in the Board of Education package, the world language departments at both the Killingley Intermediate School and the Killingley High School were extremely hard-hit, as you heard about the Latin program. And that's putting it mildly. The proposals include the elimination of the currently filled Spanish position at the intermediate school, which would completely do away with offering world languages at the middle school. At the high school, the proposal is to cut the Latin teacher position, which we just mentioned, thus eliminating and dissolving the entire program. Furthermore, as listed on page ten in the March proposal budget, if that isn't enough, one of the high school's Spanish positions is also earmarked to be cut. Why is the world language department being targeted? Mr. Angeli mentioned that there were seven positions that were going to be reduced. Two and a half of those come from the world language department. By eliminating this Spanish position at the high school, you are cutting out thirty-three percent, thirty-three percent of the Spanish program. That's one-third of the offerings. As Mr. Angeli mentioned, if you cut the offerings, this puts, puts a big stress on students. Let's put the negative impact on the Spanish program reduction into perspective. By using this year's enrollment as an example, there are five Spanish one classes. That's one teacher position. The additional levels, college prep two, college prep three, honors two, honors three, honors four, total ten additional classes. Do the math. That's two more positions. We need those two positions, not just one. So which courses get cut with the elimination of one Spanish position? By state mandate, all students in high school must successfully complete at least one year of a world language in order to meet graduation requirements. That means the world language teachers will teach every student that enters Killingley High School. Students going on to college usually need at least two years of a world language to even, even apply to a four-year school. Many of the more competitive colleges and universities require students have three or four years to vie for acceptance and won't even look at students who have less. Who will be suffering by cutting the world language teacher positions? The obvious answer is the students. Their education is your responsibility. I urge you to look at the students' needs and understand the ramifications and repercussions that would result from the decimation of the world language programs. Please consider rescinding the proposed cuts to the world language department. Unlike the specific dollar amount for the Latin teacher, I don't know what that amount would be to put back into the Board of Education budget because it would depend upon the person that was hired to fill that, the positions that you would need to have filled, because if it's a first-year teacher or a tenth, tenth-year teacher, there's a difference there. So I don't know what kind of dollar amount to put in it. So I would just ask that you would restore, I know you can't do a line item, but I would ask that you would store whatever money you needed to in order to do this. So I'm not doing it as a motion. I'm ju, just doing this as a plea to help protect the program that we're talking about, the programs we're talking about, and to, and to think about what you are doing. I thank you for listening to me, and I also thank you for the time that you devote to our students' educational well-being.
I would like to direct something at, Mr. Angeli, the superintendent. In your slide, the slide deck you presented, you referenced the twenty-eight point seven nine percent increase on a town-proposed budget side. I would just like to clarify something on that and ask you why you presented it that way. That number is not an accurate number in that you aren't taking into consideration that off of that twenty-eight point seven nine percent, you've got a huge increases from the school district for the ASOs. You have general town revenues that are offset that as well. If you look at the, the net general government budget increase, it is not twenty-eight point seven nine percent, it's six point five one percent. If you look at the net education budget, which you have at zero point six one percent, the net education budget is an increase of two point eight two percent. And if you look at the dollar amounts, the dollar amounts for the net general government budget increase, as proposed by the town council, was six hundred and fifty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The net education budget increase was six hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars. And of that six hundred and fifty-eight thousand on a town budget, on a town general government budget side, is also the almost four hundred thousand dollars of debt service that the town is having to pay for the KMS project, which is reflected on the general government side, not the Board of Education budget side. So, Mr. Angeli, if you could just kind of shed some light on why you decided to use the twenty-eight point seven nine number and not the actual net government budget number.
So it's a little hard to hear down this end of the table. I'm not sure, was there a question?
My question was why you use the twenty-eight point seven nine percent increase on the town side in the BOE, increase of zero point six one when it's actually a net, if you look at the net based off of the debt service, based off of the money that the increase on the town side, because the town is having to pay for the ASOs, even though we're reimbursed by the Board of Ed, all those numbers decrease the actual increase on the town side, because you're not taking into account revenues. So you're looking at the actual net increase on the town side would have only been six point five one percent, not twenty-eight point seven nine. And the net increase on the Board of Education side is two point eight two percent, not the zero point six one. I was just asking why you use those numbers instead of the actual net numbers.
So we compare the last year's appropriations to the, to the, so the current year appropriation to what we're asking for, for next year. The numbers that you're referring to from the board's budget, excuse me, the town's budget book, I believe those are audited numbers, and so they're different. They take into account money that was returned from the board's budget to the town.
That's actually not included in there. These aren't audited numbers because this is the proposed budget. is the proposed budget. You can't have audited numbers for a budget that A) hasn't passed or hasn't been expended.
He's talking about the slide with the houses on it.
Can I speak?
Mr. Anderson, could you repeat what you said? Your voice is muffled on this side of the room, and we're having a hard time hearing you. It's a collective effort from all of us to ask this question.
Okay. So my question was to the superintendent on his presentation that he gave today. On one of his slides, he showed the town-proposed budget at 28.79 percent increase. He then showed the Board of Education budget increase at 0.61 percent. If you look at the budget that was put forward by the town council on page A1, if you look at the net general government budgets, which takes into account on the town side, the money that the town has to pay for the ASOs, which is then received back from the Board of Education, and then also you take into account the debt service that the town has to pay for the KMS project. If there are other revenues that come in, if you're looking at the net general government budget, which is the increase that gets passed on to the taxpayers, it is not 28.79 percent from the town side. It is only 6.51 percent. If you look at the education budget, the education budget, which you stated was a 0.61 percent increase, the net education budget, meaning the cost to the taxpayers, is a 2.82 percent increase. I was just wondering why you presented it as a 2 point, excuse me, 28.79 percent increase on the town side rather than presenting what the actual impact is to the taxpayers.
So I can't really explain the 28.79 percent. I just conferred with my folks that helped put this slide together. The intent of this slide was just to show the difference, irregardless of 28.79 percent, what the impact would be should the board's budget number of 3.94 percent be restored. The six point, the, excuse me, the 0.61 percent is equal to the increase that the board would get once the $1.5 million is reduced from the request that was equal to 3.94 percent. The 28.79, as I said, I can't explain why that number was used at this time, but the .61 and the 3.94 are accurate.
Okay. Looking at it, what I saw was that you had based it just on expenditures and you weren't taking into account revenues, which then, when you start taking into account revenues, that's where you get your net general government budget, which is the actual number that impacts the mill rate.
All right. Thank you. My name is Christina Main. I live at 219 Comer Hill Road in Daville. I am a resident and a taxpayer of Killingly, who also has three children in the school system. I'm very concerned about the fact that our town council feels that their budget is more important than the budget of the education department and those who are teaching the next generation of our town's residents. The town council has seen numerous salary increases over the past several years, while our educators have not. Our school system entirely is already understaffed and underpaid. Our teachers are underpaid and overworked. To cut our education budget and increase the towns by such an astronomical amount is a slap in the face to those who continue to come to work in our district every day. We say one of our goals is the retention of good teachers and preparing our kids for the future. I question how we are prioritizing that when our pay rates continue to fall below what neighboring communities are, and how I can explain that to my children when we are setting an example for them, as I continue to tell them to work hard, stay diligent, and will pay off when clearly for our teachers and administrators it is not. When so many of our high schoolers have double study halls because we cannot hire or keep a foreign language teacher. When the mill rate increase is announced, it is not shared in a way that taxpayers can see just how little the increase actually is. Showing transparency in an increase of $15 to $20 per month is much easier to accept than a blanket percentage for the majority of towns' taxpayers. For so many of our special educative students whose 504 or IEP specifies that they must have a one-to-one pair professional, and they do not right now due to our lack of competitive pay, the reduction of the budget eliminates the reposting of these positions. I urge every parent who has a child on any individualized plan to reach out to your town council and school administrators to remind them that they are legally required to provide this service. I also find it difficult to swallow that the Board of Education entire budget is less than just what the town's personnel contractual obligations and staff salary increases are when the Board of Education employs more than 400 people. I make a motion to restore the education budget to $1,775,319 or a 3.94 percent increase.
So the motion was to increase it to bring it back to 3.94 percent. Am I correct on that? Okay. Is there a second? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address.
I second Ms. Main's motion. My name is Jessica Monjo, M-O-N-G-E-A-U, and I live at 13 Shepherd Hill Road in Danielson.
Thank you. I will open up for discussion on this motion at this time. I would like to say, on behalf of the town council, one thing that we have considered when we were deliberating the budget is, we know we've got to present a budget that's, we hope, will pass referendum vote. We took into consideration the surplus that's been turned back year over year. We looked at the fact of, even with a 0 percent increase last year, the Board of Education is still looking at a substantial surplus this year. My understanding was the surplus is, for the current year, is estimated to be $1.7 million. Excuse me, $1.6 million. I didn't have the number in front of me. So when we were looking at that, and knowing that the previous year, that they didn't have to use any, or, excuse me, this current year, they haven't had to use the non-lapsing account, which is a savings account that the Board of Education can use for anything that is related to education expenses. The fact that with a $0 increase, they didn't even have to use any of that money, and they're still showing a surplus. Those were things we took into consideration. And it isn't that we don't care about the children's education. We absolutely do. We looked at the fact that there are so many positions that are unfilled. And I have not, the superintendent, the superintendent has not indicated that he thinks all these positions will be filled this year. I understand that this Board of Education and the superintendent have to budget for whatever positions they have. They have to anticipate them all being filled. This past year, they didn't fill all the positions. The town's council looked at the fact the Board of Education has the non-lapsing account to go into. That was taken into consideration, and the Board of Education has actually indicated that they would like the cap on a non-lapsing account increased as well. So considering the fact of the Board of Education has a non-lapsing account with a cap at $2 million, if they were able to fill all these positions, they would have that money to pay to fill all those positions rather than having to increase the mill rate on citizens for positions that likely won't all be filled.
Making a comment after my second. Again, my name is Jessica Monjo, 13 Shepherd Hill Road. And I think a lot of the reason why these positions are not being filled is the attitude that's coming out of the town council. You used words like they didn't, they didn't have to use that money, and I think that that's erroneous because the real way you should state that is they didn't get to use that money. Here in Killingly, the notion, the feel of education that's coming out of our town is one that we don't support our teachers, we don't support our students, and that we're looking to cut programs. Why are educators going to come here? When we do get educators that come here, it is a stepping stone, and they move on as quickly as possible to a town that supports their students, that supports their educators, and that fully funds the programs for their students. So, Mr. Anderson, when you said that they didn't have to use it, you were wrong. They didn't get to use it because educators don't choose to come to Killingly. I look at my two children in this system, and I am grateful for their educators that they have, and I am saddened at the educators they didn't get to have. When my son went through the school, he had wonderful teachers, and so many of them have moved on within the three years that it took for my daughter to come up behind him because they didn't get the pay, the benefits, and more importantly, the respect that they need in this town as educators. So again, Mr. Anderson, you are wrong. We didn't get to spend that money. Let's change the message that we're sending to the town, to future educators, and to the surrounding students. Again, in Mr. Angeli's presentation, in the last, under 10 years, we have dropped our student enrollment from out-of-town students by nearly 20 students. And that shouldn't be, we are the only voagge program anywhere around here. We should be having students coming from out of town, hand over fist. We should be getting students from Woodstock, from Brooklyn, all of our sending towns, and we're not getting them. And the reason we're not getting them is not because we don't have to spend the money. It's because we don't get to spend the money. Because we are not sending a message to the people, to the students, to the communities, to educators around here that we value education. And by decimating the education account, you have just stood on the rooftop and you have proclaimed that you're right, we don't value education in this town. And that's why so many of us are here today, to say that we value the education and that we want the budget restored so that we can bring back our teachers, we can bring back the programs, we can make sure that our students are getting the education, the experiences that they deserve here in Killingly.
Monique Revellis, 14 Palmer Street, Apartment B, Danielson, Connecticut. I'm not laying all the blame on the town. I was here last year at the annual town meeting, and I made a motion to put back the money into the original proposed budget before they cut it, what the town told them to buy. I sat here for, I made time, a couple hours, and then I watched in awe, horror, I'm not sure what to describe it, as members of the Board of Ed stood up and voted against their own proposed budget. That told the public that you, oh, I guess they don't need the money. That's the message that that sent to them. I left here, I was furious. I took two hours out of my night to come here, and I work at a school all day long, and then you guys voted down your own budget. And now we're here again, aren't we? So the public's perception is, you didn't need it last year. You did, you may do with $1. So what's the big deal? The big deal is eventually, when the money runs out, because they keep dipping into the account, they give the money back, discretionary fund, I forget what it's called, but when that money's gone, how much is the mill rate going to increase then? You're going to have a packed auditorium here of pissed-off residents and taxpayers. You need to start valuing education and showing it by the dollar signs. Not in your heart, on paper, with real money. They cannot keep running a Board of Ed hoping that there'll be enough money or that they might not fill certain positions, they won't actually need that money. The question you need to ask yourself is why people don't want to come work here? Because that's a huge problem. Our kids deserve better. I don't even have children in this school system anymore. They got a good education while they were here. And I love their teachers. I even worked here for three years, and I loved my job here. I loved the students, the families, and every single person that I worked with. And half of those people are gone now. And that was just two years ago. So you need to ask yourself, not, your goal is to recruit talent and retain them? That is not what you have done. That is one goal that you have failed on, in a big way. You need to go back to the drawing board and figure out why. In the meantime, I don't want the students here to suffer for anybody's mistakes that's sitting there tonight. So I am definitely going to vote to have that money put back in, and I really hope that nobody on that Board of Ed stands up for a no. Thank you.
Charles Furlan, I live at 86 Knox Avenue, Danielson, Connecticut. Though Ms. Carson wouldn't agree, I did study Latin. And hopefully you'll listen to the audience, the voters tonight. I know it's not binding to put the $44,000 or whatever the amount was to Latin. Hopefully you'll do that. It was, surprisingly, I've used it all my life. Now, I do have some questions. First, if we vote for the $1.7 million increase, will that open up the teachers' contracts so salaries can be increased?
That wouldn't happen. So the Board of Education recently went through negotiations with several of its unions, and the contract, the contracts that were negotiated is one of the driving forces for the increase in the budget. So the Board of Education realized that we have been underpaying our staff regionally, and to be more competitive, negotiated in salary adjustments and then percent increases, that would take our unions out of the bottom in comparison and put them more towards the middle.
Right. I think salaries are way too low, but from what I understand, this budget here would not have an impact on increasing the salaries to get teachers to fill the positions in this budgetary year.
It would include any contractual increases. You might have been expecting to see a larger line item there, but we, as I said during my presentation, we were already recommending some staffing changes to get to the 3.94.
Okay. I just, I've been embarrassed, and I'm not going to vote for the 1.7 million increase, but I've been embarrassed that people in the past at town meetings would stand up and be proudly stand up and say, we have the lowest salaries in the state. Now, I do have some, I do have some questions here, and hopefully, when it comes down to the next budget, next contract, you'll consider that, the ability to attract better teachers, and the people should be willing to pay for that. But the 1.7 million will not bring teachers here this year. Now, I do have some questions here because you've got this sheet.
Thing is, the increase that we already have on here is from those contract negotiations. So it is part, we have already promised more money.
Right.
So that is part of this budget increase.
Okay. I really think it's not enough, but I.
I would agree with you.
But now, you have this sheet here that says, what does the reduction of 1.5 million mean? And on that, you have eliminating sports programs and teams. Could you specifically put meat on that line? So we know when people vote, they need to know what they're voting for or against. for or against?
So, we haven't identified any specific teams or programs. I could tell you that we did do an analysis of freshman sports at the high school. So, to eliminate freshman sports, that would be about a $30,000 reduction to the budget. So, the JV program would be more, and the varsity program would be more.
Just so you understand, I've been going to town meetings since I was 16 years old. Couldn't vote, but I always liked the give and take, and I was very happy today to see give and take on the town budget. And I've always heard that, usually, they throw the ban in too, and it's never happened. So, people should understand that. Now, secondly, you have a number of administrative staff. How many people are you, if this present budget, without the increase, goes through, how many people are you eliminating in the administrative budget?
So, again, those are just general areas of the budget that we were looking at. So, we have a plan that we would restructure the administrative team, should we need to do so, which would include potential elimination of assistant principal positions and the establishment of dean's-a-student positions. That would be less expensive. So, we have an idea of restructuring the administrative team.
But in the superintendent's office, where you're not dealing with people like the principals and the teachers that are under contract, and when their contract is over, I don't believe they're entitled to unemployment insurance, whereas in your office, your staff is different. And how many people in your office, and again, you need to put meat on it, because people are voting, and we're, you know, for most of us in this room, you know, a few hundred dollars extra a year is not going out to dinner for a couple of times. But there are people in this community that are, especially women who are in their late 40s, early 50s, that are divorced or widowed, that this will have a significant impact, because we're not a high-income area, especially for jobs that, and so we have to put some meat on it. How many people in your office are you going to fire?
I'm not firing anyone.
Okay, so none of those positions are going?
It wouldn't be firing somebody. It's considered a reduction in force.
Okay, I know, that's a nice way of saying it.
Yeah, but they don't get fired. It's like a layoff, right?
But redundancy is a nice way to say in England, where they use the word redundancy all the time.
So, at the superintendent's office, the staff there are mostly secretarial and business office staff. I was looking to add a position there, not reduce.
All right, so that, I've got to finish up here quickly. So, that means that your office is protected, whether the schools are not, and that the, so that, do we have a figure in the schools' non-contractual positions that you're, I'd just say we're going to eliminate or redundancy, how many people are in that position that aren't under contract, like the secretaries in the office, the...
I don't know what he's saying. So, I couldn't hear what the question was.
I want to know numbers, you know, because we're talking about, again, now it's going to be almost $700 a year for the average person.
Yeah, so I don't have a number of the staff, because we're still evaluating which positions we might eliminate, right? If we don't get 3.94, there's going to be 1.5 million dollars worth of reductions. It will be many staff and then other things.
But it's already in the budget. We have the numbers here with the reduction.
No, no, that budget is the 3.94 budget. That is not the budget that reflects a .61. We haven't identified those reductions yet.
Okay, and the last question is, if, for the redundancies, do you have a figure of how much unemployment, the, because schools and towns where they have employees that are entitled to unemployment don't pay quarterly. They...
So, I'm not sure what you mean by redundancies, because we don't view it that way, but any position where somebody is laid off, so teacher positions, custodial positions, you know, pretty much most people in the district, if they don't find other employment, then they're all entitled to...
Right, but how much have you budgeted? That's my question.
So, that's something that we have to take into account on the number of positions, right? So, we would not have budgeted enough money to cover for the potential costs for eliminating many positions due to the budget. So, we would actually have to eliminate more than the 1.5 million, because we'd have to be adding in unemployment.
But if I understand it correctly, you can't tell me how many people are going to be eliminated. You can't tell me what sports teams are going to be eliminated, which is...
Not at this time, because it's currently under evaluation. Just know that it would be 1.5 million dollars.
But we came here to vote, and it would be helpful to have that information, because, again, we're not paying enough, we don't have enough enrichment, but I think the 1.7 million increase for those people, and you see them, they're in town, they're the elderly, they're just enough so they don't qualify for any deductions. The widows, the divorced women that are trying to hang on to that house, this is going to have a significant impact on their lives, and so we should think carefully about what we're doing.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tabitha Tyler, 109 Green Hollow Road, Danielson. I've...
Could you repeat that, please?
Tabitha Tyler, 109 Green Hollow Road. I've been in Killingley my entire life, since I was in elementary school. I went through all the schools here, and for the longest time, I was super proud to be a Killingley resident. I would brag to people about my town, my small, little town, and how great they were for the kids, and how thoughtful the community was, the springtime festival, and the sidewalk sales, and the yard sales, all of that stuff that makes our town unique. But now, we're having an issue where they're cutting our budgets, and they're cutting our kids' budgets, and they're telling us it's what we need to make the town thrive. But I'm telling you that you're causing our town to suffocate. Our kids need a good education, and they need a solid education. They need to know that their teachers are going to be there year after year to support them. I have kids in almost all three schools, and I have my youngest, who's on an IEP, who's supposed to have an assistant, and he hasn't for three years, because there's nobody to fill the position. So, now, he's backsliding, and who's at fault? Me as the parent who is trying to support what I can at home, or the school that's failing him because they can't supply him with his necessities? It's like you and I, we need to breathe, we need water, we need food. He needs help, and he's not getting it because of the budget cuts. I hate the fact that our taxes have to go up, but in the long run, I want this town to be amazing. I want this town and us to lead our kids and show our kids compassion and understanding and support and empathy. The only way to do that is by leading by example. And honestly, if we have to tighten our belts a little bit to make it happen, I'm all for that, because we need the budget increase. We cannot keep cutting our budgets. You're absolutely right. We could not fill positions, because we don't pay enough. Paras are leaving our district to go to neighboring districts, because they pay more. You're absolutely right. We can't fill our security positions, our armed guard security positions. We can't fill them. Why? Where's the money? Where's the guaranteed money that they're going to have in five years and 10 years? We have no guarantee, because we can't show them stability. We can't show them that, "Don't worry, we've got your back." I drove school bus for Killingley, and I had to leave because lack of pay and the fact that the union that's for the bus garage is great, but it only does so much, and the town doesn't support them. Our Board of Ed needs to lead by example, and our kids need that support. I highly suggest that we all really think about this. The 1.5 million sounds like a lot, but in the long run, my kid's worth more than that. All the kids in this school are worth more than that, and in this district, KHS cares, KISS cares, KMS cares. Let's show the town that the Board of Ed cares about our students.
Thank you.
Lisa Vance, 262 Mason Hill Road. I don't know how Robert's works, but can we move a motion to vote, or motion, yeah, move the question to vote, can we?
We had a motion to move this question to vote. Is there a second?
Tabitha Tyler, I second the motion.
So, we are moving this motion to vote?
I'd like to make a motion to do a paper ballot for the motion.
We have a motion to do a secret ballot. Is there a second? There's a second by Andy Whitehead. Discussion? So, we have a motion to move the motion forward. So, we had a motion to move the motion to vote. Okay, all right. Yep, I see, yep, yep. Okay. All right, so first, we're going to have discussion on moving the motion to vote before. Okay, okay. So, we are moving the motion. We are moving the motion to move to a vote. There is a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now moving to a vote.
With a motion, I made the motion to do a secret ballot.
So, now, we have a motion to go to the secret ballot, made by Mr. Cottula. Is there a second?
Matthew George, 156 Country Club Road, motion second to a secret ballot.
Thank you. Matthew George.
Discussion. I just quickly, hopefully, people will vote this down and will go by people standing and sitting. It's important to see how our elected officials are willing to vote on this very serious issue. And my only suggestion is that you appoint counters, because there's going to be a lot of people. It'll make it much easier and quicker if you appoint counters, several people to count the heads and sections, the way it's been done in the past.
Susan Griffiths, I move the question.
We have a motion to move the question. Is there a second? Come up to the microphone.
Jessica Manjo, 13 Shepherd Hill Road.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to move the motion. All those in favor of moving the motion to vote, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yep. We are moving to vote on the motion to have a secret ballot.
So, wait, so first, you move the motion about whether or not you want to do by secret ballot. So, this was to move, this was to close the discussion on whether or not you want to do secret ballot. Now, you're going to then vote on the motion to make it into a secret ballot. So, that, what you just did was to move the motion, which meant you closed discussion on whether or not it should be a secret ballot, and now, you're going to, the next step would be to go to, to go to vote on the motion to put it into a secret ballot vote. Does that make sense? Right, so this, so this vote that you're going to now take is, you already just did that. Okay, so, the motion, we had a motion to close, to move the motion on, which closes discussion on whether or not it should be a secret ballot. There was a second on that. So, we're going to take that motion. So, this is about just ending the discussion on whether or not it's a secret ballot. Once that motion finishes, then you would then vote on the motion of whether or not this is going to be a secret ballot, okay? So, right now, you're only voting on ending discussion. Does that make sense? Are we there? Okay.
Thank you. So, right now, we have a motion and a second to end discussion and move this to a vote. So, all you're voting for right now, you're not voting for a secret ballot, you're voting to move the question for a secret ballot to a vote. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will now move to a vote. All those in favor of a secret ballot, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion fails. So, at this point, we will now move to a vote on the motion to restore the Board of Education budget to the... Let me get the exact figure. So, the motion is to restore the Board of Education budget to $46,805,118. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. The ayes have it. At this time, if there are no other motions or comments regarding the Board of Education budget, we will conclude this. Both budgets. I will entertain a motion to adjourn to a machine vote on both budgets on May 9th between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. at both polling places.
Susan Griffiths, so moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Tabitha Tyler, second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This annual town meeting is adjourned.